Good evening, everyone. We will call the January 17, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene?
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti. We have quorum.
We have a quorum. Next order of business is an executive session. We do not have an executive session planned for tonight, so we will proceed directly to our invocation, and we'll recognize John Lightenberg from Love Inc. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this city, and thank you for the people you've set to lead us and protect us and to serve our city. Lord, as we embark on a new year, we just pray for the people in this room that we've elected to lead us, give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make, help them to lead justly and defend those who cannot defend themselves, grant them vision that they would lead our community to become a place where all people can prosper and be treated fairly. I pray for the employees of our city, the government, protect those who serve to protect us, Lord. Guide and direct those who serve to guide and direct our city. We pray for our citizens, help us to treat each other with love and respect. We pray for the hurting, the poor, and the sick in our community, and for those that serve them. Father, today too, we remember Governor Janklow, and we pray for his family and friends, that you'd comfort them and be near them at this time, in all of our state, as we remember what he brought to us. Lord, guide this meeting tonight. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
And thank you, John, for that. Next order of business is adoption of the agenda. We have four items that were published in the online agenda. They are not on the printed agenda that's in front of you. We will add, make sure that those are added. I will read those into the record. 66A is a reminder of the Vision Fund Committee Meeting, formerly known as the 2012 Committee, and that will be meeting on Monday, January 23, 2012, at 6:30 PM in council chambers. 66B is appointments to the Rapid City Depository Banking Review Task Force. Appointments expire April 16 of 2012. Voting members: Jim Meyerhouse, Shirley Frederick, Tom Katus, Pete Kappa, and a council member to be appointed by the council, I believe that will be Jordan Mason. Non-voting members: Pauline Assumption, City Finance Officer, and Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. Next item is 66C, and this will be an update on town hall meetings held on Saturday, January 14, 2012, with possible action. 66D, appointment of Bonnie Peterson as a council representative to the Main Street Square Art Committee. Are there any additional items to add to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions noted? Motion by Doyle, second by Mason, to approve with the four items added. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and the agenda is adopted. And if now we could have A.J. Green come up front, and Ward Four Alderman, Jordan Mason, and John Roberts join me down front. The January 2012 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to our community. We are pleased to present this award to A.J. Green of Rapid City. A.J. and his family live across the street from the North Rapid City Officers Memorial. A.J. took care of the temporary memorials on Anamosa Street, kept them clean, and watched over them to prevent vandalism. He played an essential role in the developing and construction of the permanent memorial for the officers. A.J.'s involvement in the memorial has shown his commitment and care for the Rapid City community. Thank you, A.J., for your dedication to the city of Rapid City. And now I have an executive proclamation that John Roberts will be reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, A.J.
Executive Proclamation, Rapid City, South Dakota, Office of the Mayor. Whereas the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to our community, and whereas the January Citizen of the Month is awarded to A.J. Green of Rapid City, and whereas A.J. has been an active member of the North Rapid Memorial Committee, and whereas A.J. has taken care of the temporary fallen officer's memorial, and has showed much commitment and care for his community by donating his time during the construction and planning phases of the permanent memorial. Now therefore, we, Alderman John Roberts and Alderman Jordan Mason of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim A.J. Green as January 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient, in recognition of his innovation and leadership, and the many contributions he has made to our community. I didn't imagine that A.J. would say anything. A.J. is a pretty quiet person. He's more of an action-type of guy. I was very, very impressed when I first met A.J., and I was very happy that not only is he in my ward, but happy to get to know him and be able to call him a friend. And thank you very much for your service, A.J.
Area and Charity, if you could come down as well. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the December 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Bradley Colling. Mr. Colling was born in Wichita on May 28, 1955, and raised in Fullston, Pennsylvania, until he joined the Air Force in 1974. He met his wife Marcia Louise Towne, a 1972 graduate of Rapid City High School. Bradley and Marcia were married on November 15, 1975, and have two children, Thomas Colling of Omaha, and Suzanne Colling, married to Keith McCarty of Omaha, and they have two grandchildren, Ryan, age seven, and Sarah, two. Mr. Colling served in the U.S. Air Force from March 26, 1974, to November 1, 1994. In 1974, he was assigned to the 44th Transportation Squadron, Ellsworth Air Force Base, as a vehicle operator dispatcher with assignments including mobile maintenance and transportation control center. In 1978, he cross-trained as a missile procedures trainer, maintainer, and computer programmer for the 44th Strategic Missile Wing. In 1980, he was assigned to the 90th Strategic Missile Wing at FE Warren Air Force Base in Wyoming. In 1986, he was appointed to the non-commissioned officer in charge of the missile procedure trainer branch, and was instrumental in his unit receiving outstanding ratings, two outstanding ratings, from Operation Ready Inspection General, and two outstanding ratings from the 3901st Strategic Mission Evaluation Team. In 1989, his missile career field was eliminated, and then he was cross-trained to biomedical equipment maintenance career field. He was instrumental in the medical logistics support branch, receiving outstanding rating from the health management medical inspections with five subordinates, also receiving outstanding professional performer awards. In 91, he was assigned to the 86th Medical Group in Ramstein Air Force Base in Germany as a plant technology and safety manager. While on active duty, he volunteered as a Boy Scout master for 10 years, base recreation assistant youth director for 14 years, Catholic fund and Catholic parish council, and Catholic education teacher for 14 years. He graduated from Community College of the Air Force in 1985 with an associate degree of applied science in electric technology from Southern Illinois University in Carbondale. He graduated in 1987 with a Bachelor of Science in industrial technology, and again in 1992 with an associate degree of applied science in biomedical equipment technology. He retired as Master Sergeant after 20 years and six months of active duty. He has taught as a substitute middle school and high school teacher in Rapid City Douglas and St. Thomas Moore. He was librarian associate at the Rapid City Public Library, repaired 994 clocks at the clock shop, and has worked for the U.S. Post Office in Rapid City. He has been nominated for this award, his continued acts of service to the following organizations: Disabled American Veterans, Fort Meade Veterans Affairs Van Driver, Veterans Affairs My Health Evette Facilitator, U.S. Flag Retirement Chaplain, Golden Corral's Veterans Day Disabled American Veterans Van Fundraiser, Bugle Across America, and has played taps at veterans' funerals, Memorial Day, POW/MIA, and Wreath Across America ceremonies. Part of TRIA, Retired enlisted Association Veterans Honor Guard, a chaplain, past secretary, and a past parliamentarian. Knights of Columbus Honor Guard for Blessed Sacrament, and Bishop Robert Gruce, and Friar Nathan Spark Ordinations, Fourth Chaplain Ceremony, Wreath Across America, wakes and funerals and parades, inpatient and outpatient volunteering, and has served several local officer positions and numerous fundraisers. Also part of the Seventh Cavalry Drum and Bugle Corps, a baritone player, secretary, scheduler, and music arranger. Past South Dakota Veterans Cemetery Support Council member, he is to be commended for his service to his country and his continued service to his community. Thank you for all that you do.
I couldn't have done anything without my wife, Marcia, and so because of her that I'm receiving this, because she let me go out and play. She's a schoolteacher over at General Beetle Elementary School as a literacy teacher.
You couldn't have. There isn't enough time in one day for you to accomplish all those things. Thank you very much for your service, for your dedication, and being there to help us get the mission accomplished. Thank you very much, and thank you, ma'am, for letting me come out to play.
I was just going to say it sure would have saved some time if we would have put the couple things you haven't done on the list. You're quite impressive. Thank you for your service.
Pat O'Neill was born in 1920 on a farm ranch north of Wall, South Dakota. He attended country school and graduated from Wall High School in 1938. He joined the U.S. Navy in February 1939, where he graduated from the Great Lakes Naval Training Station and was assigned to the light cruiser USS Savannah CL-42 at Mare Island, California, as apprentice seaman. The Savannah operated in the Pacific, training with the fleet out of Pearl Harbor from 1940 to 41. In June of 1941, the Savannah received orders to join the Atlantic Fleet and was assigned to operate with destroyers in the North Atlantic to protect merchant ships carrying freight and supplies to Great Britain. The Savannah operated in the Atlantic to spot, seize, and destroy enemy cargo ships carrying supplies to Germany. In November 1942, he engaged in an operation of support of the U.S. Army invasion and landing of troops at Fort Lafayette, French Morocco. In March 43, the Savannah entered the Mediterranean in preparation for the August and September invasions of Sicily, Italy. In September 1943, the Savannah was hit during the invasion of Salerno, Italy, by a 3,450-pound German Fritz bomb that destroyed the forward section of the ship and claimed the lives of 206 officers and crew. The Savannah won three battle stars for the invasion during Mr. O'Neill's time onboard. He spent a total of four and a half years on the Savannah as a warrant electrician. He then was ordered to board the USS Bremerton CA-130 for duty, where he attained the commission rank of chief warrant electrician. Mr. O'Neill resigned from service in November of 1945. Commendations include good conduct in the Atlantic operation, World War II victory medals, and a personal commendation letter. He has been a lifetime resident of Rapid City since leaving the service. He has worked in various career fields as an electrician, real estate agent, and owner and operator of Rushmore Marine and Rushmore Solar Energy Systems. He's been actively involved in this community, being a life member of the VFW, American Legion, DAV, Alx Lodge, and member of the Moose Club. He is also a life member of the USS Savannah Association, USS Bremerton Association, and U.S. Navy Cruisers Association. He's a chairman of the Department of South Dakota Memorial Park and Chapel. He is to be commended for his service to his country. Thank you very much.
Well, it was unfortunate that I left off my most prized thing that I've done, and that's raise a family of eight. I have a son and daughter in California, and incidentally, they're both retired. And I have a son and daughter in Colorado, and a son and daughter in Rapid City. So I'm blessed with such a great group, but I'm really happy to be here. I don't know what else to say, I guess.
Pat deserves more credit than he's getting. I am his executive officer, for lack of word, with the VFW post here in Rapid City. And sometimes we think the veterans are going away with World War II, lost World War II Ukrainian veterans, but Pat, this young man here, through his leadership, rededicated himself back to the VFW to keep it alive and keep it available for veterans in years out. We have approximately 1,000, these are some facts, 1,000 homeless veteran women in the region. We have approximately 70 homeless veterans at our mission. We have a lot of veterans coming home from Iraq and Afghanistan, suffering from PTSD, from IEDs and TSI. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and his dedication at this time should be acclaimed and appreciated, because our work for the veterans has just begun. Patrick? Thank you, and I salute you for that service also.
Thank you, everyone. Now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of council members present. I do not have any speaker request forms for general public comment, so we'll move on. We'll now move to non-public hearing items, items four through 66, and we'll start by opening public comment for items four through 50. Can we have a motion, please? Motion by Roberts, second by Brown, to open public comment on items four through 50. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on items four through 50. We have one speaker request form on items four through 50, and we'll go to Leanna Basell for discussion on item 39.
Hello, Mayor Quaker, council members. I'm Leanna Basell. I'm the president of the AFSMI Union Local Number 1031 here in Rapid City. I represent over 180 employees across the city and the library. I'm here to speak on behalf of those employees and support the proposed wage adjustment, item number 39 on the agenda. After reviewing the plan, AFSMI members believe that the proposed restructuring recognizes positive values and the importance of employees that have dedicated themselves to the long-term future of the city. The plan recognizes the benefits received by the city by having skilled employees, and at the same time addresses the labor management problems that come with hiring new employees at the same rate as the long-term employees. This plan is a positive step forward for Rapid City and its relationship with its workforce. On behalf of AFSMI Local 1031, we encourage the city commission to support this plan and vote yes on passing it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items four through 50. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion to close public comment. We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Roberts to close public comment on items four through 50. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on consent items four through 49, and if you'd like to remove an item, please hit your light. First, go to Charity Doyle.
I'd like to pull item number 39, please.
Pauline Assumption?
Item 44, please.
Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent, items four through 49, with the exceptions of 39 and 44? Motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number 39, Jordan Mason. Can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 39 is to approve the employee compensation proposal, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. And we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank Chief Allender and Chief Malteverne for some of the statistics that went into this whole decision-making process, though it really wasn't a, this one was kind of a no-brainer. But, you know, I'm sure people have heard out there that, and this applies to other city employees, but when we look at fire and we look at PD, we know that they're underpaid for the region for what they do. And, I mean, we have cases in both departments very recently that shows that risk to life is a very real issue. It costs Rapid City taxpayers about $59,000 plus $2,000 in equipment to train one police officer. About $40,000 minimum to train one firefighter. And the truth is, folks, is that these people, we train them for other cities. They leave, so they can get paid slightly higher wages. So I think this is a very good step in the right direction, and it's been long overdue. In the last eight years, we've lost a dozen firefighters at least. I'm not sure how many PD we've lost, but it's been significant. And just to keep fostering the practice and conditions that keep this perpetuating, keep this cycle repeating and repeating, I think is fiscally irresponsible on the part of the city. city. But I just wanted to talk a little bit more about it. I think that there's been some misconception out there on the issue, and if at all possible, I know the mayor put a lot of work into this as well, and Sam, would you mind just kind of sharing why you thought this was a good direction for the city to go?
Sure. I believe that this was, first of all, we had serious compression issues, particularly with police and fire, and we had a lot of effort went into this, and we believe that this is fiscally responsible, this is a very fiscally responsible step to take, and it's a very reasonable step to take. And I, there was a lot of work that went into this and a lot of comparisons that went into this, and I would like to thank our chiefs, Chief Allender and Mike Malteverne for their work, and especially Jeff Barbeer, who put a tremendous amount of effort into this.
Yeah, that does help clear it up. I think there has been a misconception that this was a merit or performance increase and that it was selective, but I believe this is going to everybody. Is that correct?
Everybody, every city employee, and with the exception of elected officials, that's set up on a different resolution, and that's, they're not included in this at all. But every city employee is receiving something, and, but the focus of this is addressing the serious compression issues that have allowed, for example, a police officer or firefighter who's just started to be making the same amount as someone who's been with the city three or four or five years, and so this addresses that issue.
Okay, so really, the way it is and as they're built in, we're just kind of getting back to what we used to do before the economy took a dive?
Yes, the Condry study had been suspended, the implementation had been suspended in 2009, and this reinstates part of that.
Okay, so it's not a special thing, it's not a special favor, it's not performance, it's not merit, it's not just because Sam really likes everybody, it's because it's the right thing to do. Could you explain a little bit about why we don't give those merit and performance increases and why we keep it level across the entire city employee base?
Well, there's been discussion on doing merit pay, and there are some governments that do do merit pay, and that's not something that we have done in Rapid City. One of the problems with doing merit pay in the private sector versus the public sector, in the private sector, people don't see what each other's salaries are. And in the public sector, when you, when everyone knows what everybody's wage is and you try to do merit pay or performance-based pay, it can breed strife and envy and other types of problems, and it's just not something that, you know, that we've chosen as a community to do at this time.
Okay, thank you so much for clearing that up. I appreciate it.
We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also want to thank you, the staff that was involved in this preparation for this resolution, and the hard work that everybody behind the scenes put together on this. And then I know the police and fire have gotten a lot of recognition on tonight's mentions here, but I would also like to thank the library folks, the public works, the airport, and I could go down through the list and I'll forget somebody, but everybody that's across the city that's in there, that put all their time and effort into this to help us come forward on this resolution, and they really, really deserve it, and hopefully we can continue on this path that we're going on to continue, because I see the staff coming back, the morale is coming back, to work for the city, and they're doing an outstanding job. I have done some ride-alongs with the different departments, different divisions, and I can't say enough about the admiration and dedication that these folks have for the city and the hard work that they do, all the way, and all the way up and down the line, from the management down to the entry-level positions. So I can't thank them enough for hanging in there, those that are going to see some compensation from this. The other part of it is that we've got some more work to do on this, and I think the relationship that is building between the unions and the management has gotten a lot better. The labor management's meetings that I'm hearing about are progressing very nicely, and I can't thank everybody enough for working together and especially working through all the tough times to get to the point we are right now. So to you all, thank you very much for what you do. I will yield the floor.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor for approval. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number 44, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to acknowledge the update on the library bill pay, and I'll move to acknowledge.
And we'll go to our finance officer, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, I asked Charlene to attach a new memo to this item. We have gotten a determination from the city attorney's office in that we would be able to process the library bills like we will be processing the airport and the Civic Center bills, and so instead of just acknowledging the report, I would like to have your approval on that as well, please.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts to approve the bill pay and process change for the library. We'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
One question, as I read the memo, it says "as budgeted," so if there's any deviation from the budget by-line item, or an exceedance, or if the expenditure not budgeted, has to come back to council, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the only thing that would have to come back to council is supplemental appropriations. So if they were going to go over their bottom line in the budget, the way that the statutes read, they would have to come for additional appropriation as a whole. But how they spend that within their line items is up to the library board, technically, according to the state statute.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item 50. Can we have a motion to continue item 50 to February 6?
Soon.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on non-consent items, items 51 through 66, and we have a motion to open public comment. Motion by Brown, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comment is now open for items 51 through 66. And we'll first go to Tanchi Weaver to speak on 66C. 66C, which is update on town hall meetings held on Saturday regarding term lengths. Tanchi.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to say thank you to you all for arranging the town halls. I really appreciate it. It's good when you ask the public for input, and I believe that you truly do want it. I just wanted to say that even though the coverage made it seem that there was little interest in this topic, I don't think it was really fair coverage, and I think that probably all of you are a little bit outraged over it too, because Ward 3, no offense to Ward 3, but it was only one-fifth of the story. There were five of these town halls that occurred simultaneously. There were a lot of citizens that made a point to come and be part of the discussion. I myself took a vacation day just so I could be there, and I thought it was very productive. I live in Ward 5, and Bonnie Peterson and Ron Sasso did, I thought, a good job in conducting the meeting. There was a lot of input. We actually took votes, and then a step beyond that afterwards, because I originally had committed myself to attending these town halls in every ward as they were held, but when they were simultaneously, that became a little difficult. So I knew people in all wards, and so after our meeting, all of the people that I knew gathered at local restaurant, and we compared notes, and we added up numbers, and we got feedback, and I would dare say that our story was really the story, that there really isn't great consensus for anything, that the town is a little bit divided on this issue. There was a little bit of an edge towards an initiated measure, but by no stretch is there a huge mandate one way or the other. And so I think it was very misleading what we all read in the newspaper. It looked to me more like outcome direction rather than event reporting. So I would encourage you to give some thought to that, but there was news made in our meeting, and I'm, do you have another speaker request by any chance?
Three.
Okay, I'm going to not tell you what that news was, because I think that attendee was probably from my ward, and we'll probably fill you in on that, but I think that the council was done a disservice, as was the public, because the whole story was not told. But thank you, and have a good evening.
We'll now go to Peter Wernicki.
Good evening, Pete Wernicki. I too, like Tanchi said, I really wanted to applaud every single member of the council. The group that Tanchi was talking to you about, I was part of that. I also was in Ward 5, and I'd like to even single out both my ward, both Bonnie Peterson and Ron Sasso. They did an excellent job in fairness and truly listening to the debate that was going on without interjecting their own opinions. But I also want to say one other thing. I want to point out something that happened in Ward 4. Both John and Jordan, I want to applaud both of you that you took extra time prior to that meeting to talk to a busload of people from Menloosahans Center that were going away. You took the time to actually bring them into the debate. That was about 50 people. That's a tremendous thing to do, and I think you need to be singled out for doing that. That was above and beyond what you needed to do. That all said, what Tanchi was alluding to is we all compared notes, and lo and behold, you know, what you see in the paper, they keep mentioning less than 20 in Ward 3. What about the rest of the wards? We did a rough count. You had over 130 people. That's a big difference from what the journals reported. And myself, I was quite irritated with the coverage from the journal, because it was actually two different stories. The first story that they put out online occurred about two hours after these forums were over, and naturally, of course, you know, it takes time for them to consolidate some information, but there was some exchange on the online blog about some of the, well, let's just say, some of the facts that they were presenting. When the second story came out, myself, I was incensed, because having talked to people that actually attended these different forums in the different wards, you get a whole different picture. Part of the reason I wanted to come up and point this out was it was both the chamber and the journal that originally was pushing all of you for an ordinance. Now, if we can't get as citizens from one of those two parties that originally was pushing this and supporting this issue, then where do we, as the public, get our information from? I know you guys have now got a really tough job, because I know what you all heard from various people, and it's, I don't envy you, because it was quite a diverse opinion about what was going on. So whatever decisions come out of this, then you're the ones that are going to have to face it, and I think they've done you more of a disservice than the public. Thank you.
And we'll go to Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Ron Wyfembach from 927 East Ohio Street, and I'm here to talk about item 66B. I feel like a basketball player who came to the game, when it got there to make the shot, the game was already over. And I'll explain to you why I feel that way. I think the last council meeting, you had item number 26, it was moved up on the agenda, and it was to approve a resolution 2011-171, designating official depositors. From that grew a whole nother agenda item called a citizens' task force. From that item, which I don't know how that works, how you can add an item without a knowledge of anybody else, but obviously, somebody knew that this item was going to be contentious, because it was moved from 26 to number 5. Tonight, we came here tonight, there was obviously another contention, some item here as we sat back there and wondered, well, maybe we should have called ahead of time and moved it up and not told anybody what we were going to talk about. But I want to read you a letter that I found myself writing to the journal as an opinion, only because I had no say in the matter of this citizens' task force being resolved. So I'm going to read you this memo that I wrote as an opinion in the Rapid City Journal. Government by the people or government by committee? And that's what I'm asking you guys tonight. Recently, a select group of citizens lobbied the mayor and council to form another citizens' task force, and that's evident because this item was moved up. Somebody in here, or all of you in here, knew that this item had more than what was actually on the label here. So the objective of the group was to eliminate certain banks from participating in business deposit transactions with the city. The city has a process in place called an RFP that they put out, and they found exactly what they wanted to find. They wanted to have the best interest rates for the deposits, they wanted to have the services that would match the necessities of transacting business in this community. The objective of this group was to eliminate those banks from participating in these business deposit transactions with the city, okay? This is legitimate business, doing legitimate business inside our city limits. It got a few people, for some reason, who feel, whatever it is, I listened to the video again, because I was at home, I couldn't be here, I wanted to come down there as fast as I could, was to respond, but I had no idea this was going on. These are legitimate businesses that transact within our community. If you've got a few people who have concerns about the validity of them, then bring the facts to the table. I heard things like local banks, and I would challenge each one of you up there to tell me what a local bank in our community is. This is an entirely absurd notion to think that local, is that Rapid City? Is that the county? Is that the state? Is that the United States? Is that the country? What is it? Because I know if we start this process, we have employees, you talk about our employees, our good employees here tonight, a lot of them don't even live within the city limits. Where do we start? Where do we end? I'll go, because I'm taking a lot of time. The mayor and council voted yet to form another citizens' task force. This task force will look into the protocol of how banks are selected to handle, even though we have a fine finance director, as mentioned earlier, that can do that job. Banks and credit unions that operate in our city are heavily regulated and provide niche services within the community, just like other legitimate businesses.
Ron?
Yep.
Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
All right, fine. The use of these citizens' task force would be best used to solicit individuals who are concerned about the facts, not about feelings. I'm telling you, the people that say they moved their money from the big banks to the credit unions because they're local, they need to look at the credit union financial statements, find out where they're putting their money. Find out if the credit union will do an $80 million municipal bond venture for the city at 3.25%. But there's a bigger principle of the matter than just this. Whose business is next? That's my question to you guys. Who's is next? Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items 51 through 66. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Brown, second by Doyle, to close public comment on items 51 through 66. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 51, Jordan Mason. Charity Doyle.
Item number 51, first reading of ordinance number 5792, supplemental appropriation number one for 2012. It was not at agenda review, Jordan was, so I'm not sure what the committee recommendation Okay, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Sasso for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 52.
Item number 52, first reading of ordinance number 5796, an ordinance to prohibit animals which disturb the peace by amending section 6.08.090 of the eight point zero nine zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And on that one, I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-three.
Item number fifty-three, second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one, an ordinance to change the assistant city attorney position from an appointive position to an employee position by amending section two point one six point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Jordan, fifty-four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-four, second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-two, an ordinance to change the assistant finance officer position from an appointive position to an employee position by amending section two point four zero point one five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-five.
Item fifty-five, is second reading ordinance number seventy-eighty-three, an ordinance to change the city engineer position from an appointive position to an employee position by amending section two point four four point zero seven zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-six. Jordan?
Item fifty-six, is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-seven, an ordinance to correct the appointive process of officers by amending section two point zero four point zero one zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item fifty-seven, is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty, an ordinance to amend the established parking zones in the city Rapid City by amending section ten point four four point zero one zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-eight.
Item fifty-eight is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-four, an ordinance to establish free parking in the parking ramp zone on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays by amending section ten point four four point zero seven zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-five, an ordinance to establish free parking in metered spaces in the parking ramp zone on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays by amending section ten point four four point zero five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item sixty, is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-six, an ordinance to amend the parking zones, including the parking, in the parking meter time limit ordinance by amending section ten point four four point zero six zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sixty-one.
Item sixty-one, is first reading ordinance fifty-seven ninety-seven, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six, and this rezoning from general commercial district to high-density residential district, and this located south of East St. Joseph Street between Elm Avenue and Birch Avenue, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sixty-two. Gary Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Sixty-two is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Larry Patterson for preliminary plat, located at two-three-six-four-eight Stroud Rim Drive. I move to approve.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sixty-three. Gary?
Sixty-three. Discontinue mowing and rights of way. I move to approve.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no problem at all with the Parks Department getting out of the mowing of the rights of way. However, I want it clearly stated for the Public Works Department, that in the interest of public safety, when it comes to mowing the rights away appropriately for the protection of the public in snowstorms and plowing the snow and so forth, that they fully understand they have the right and authority to get the job done, whether they have to do it themselves, hire it out, or whatever, because that's the purpose of mowing those. And I want Terry and his crews to have that full endorsement of this council.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up with that, and to address some of those concerns that Mr. Wright has brought forward. But it's my understanding, I guess I would turn to our, to our growth management, or I'm sorry, not growth management, community development planning, something or other that we've changed it to at this point, Director Brett Limbaugh, and ask him if that's, if it's the intention that we will still be enforcing some of those concerns, dealing with mowing and getting out.
I'll go to our Director of Community Planning, Brett Limbaugh.
I guess I would have to defer to either Terry or Jeff Barbeer when it comes to maintenance of the, those issues.
I guess I would refer that, then, to Terry.
Jeff?
Or Jeff, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. It is actually the responsibility of the landowner per ordinance. That is not a change. It's just that Parks and Rec has mowed some of these road ditches for these landowners. Code enforcement will take care of the notifications. We would do the normal abatement if we get to that point. Hopefully, there won't be very many of those. So we plan on handling this with our normal processes. In fact, if this is approved, we're going to send out notices right away, so the warnings to those landowners that we are going to change the policy, and so they know they will be held responsible to mow those.
Thank you, Jeff. And just one last question. So just so I'm clear, but we'll just enforce this, and then if a property owner doesn't want to comply, we'll still do it, and then, you know, put a, you know, bill them for the services, correct?
Alderman Mason, we don't actually do the mowing ourselves. We'll hire a private contractor and then bill the property owner.
Sure, great.
And we, to address public works needs, if they reported any properties that they thought were going to be problematic, we certainly could take a look at those and make sure those landowners were noticed.
Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
In all due respect to what you're trying to do, protect the taxpayers and the responsibility of the Parks Department, I still want the Public Works Department to have the authority to proceed if necessary to mow these if they have to before the snow flies. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been out there in the middle of the night. I know what it's like, and it's tough. And if you do not have those rightaways mowed up on the shoulder, the snow will blow in and drift, and you have problems. All I'm asking is that the Public Works Director has clear, our blessing, if he has to, to do it. If code enforcement can get the job done, great. But if at the eleventh hour, he's got to go, I want him to know he can do it.
I think that would be a reasonable amendment. Let's first go to our city attorney, Joel. Is that something that we need to have an amendment for? Could the Public Works Department or Parks and Rec do this in emergency?
I believe the Public Works Director could do that in an emergency situation. Certainly wouldn't hurt if there was a resolution in place. So it was very clear to Public Works Department that the city council was all right with that action.
Jerry, would you like to offer?
I would say go ahead and vote on this suspension of mowing by the Parks Department. And I'll come back with a resolution to support Public Works on this issue. That's okay. That way, it's clear and clean.
At the next Public Works?
No, I'll do it right now. So go ahead and vote to approve the Parks Department in their wish to get out of the mowing business. And I want to follow up with a resolution giving the Public Works the authority to proceed in emergencies to take care of it. I'll do it after this vote, so it's not muddled up in the middle of it. Can I do that?
I don't, I don't think we can do that. I think we can amend the motion on the floor.
Okay, I'll amend it. I'll ask for a friendly amendment that would allow the Public Works Department to proceed with mowing if necessary.
That's a friendly amendment. So is that okay with the, who made the motion? It's okay with the motion maker to allow, should we broaden it to staff, not just Public Works? So Parks and Rec could make the decision, too? Or do you want it just Public Works?
Parks Department has nothing to do with snow removal or rights away in the streets in Iowa, is the Public Works Department does. So I leave it with Public Works Director.
Okay, and that's okay with the motion maker and the seconders? So that, that has been friendly amended. We'll now go back to the lights. Bonnie Peterson.
I was just going to offer that resolution, so I don't need to say anything. Thank you.
Richie?
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask a question of Terry Walzendorf, the Public Works Director. Terry, do we have the equipment to do such a request, what Alderman Wright is asking?
Thank you, Councilman Nordstrom. Public Works Department actually does not have equipment to do the mowing. But in an emergency, we'll find a way to get it done, whether that's working with Parks Department, cooperating with the county. We'll get it done.
I would support, Jerry, if you made the motion, that if it was an emergency, if the Parks Department would handle it in an emergency, I would support you. But Public Works doesn't have the equipment, and there would have to be a lot of cross-communications to get that project accomplished. I know what you want. I know what you desire to do, but right now, I don't think Public Works is a proper venue for doing this.
Let Terry handle it. I know he can. The Public Works Department can handle it, one way or the other. They can hire it, rent it, beg, borrow, they'll get it done. Let them have the authority, let them have the responsibility, because it is theirs. Thank you.
Mayor?
Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Is this just for emergency only, correct? Is just emergency only, meaning that the property owners are going to go through the due process, the code enforcement will go through their processes, and I forget what other, other divisions or departments have to be involved in it, but we are really going to be the last, last resort to do this.
Bottom line, if the Director of Public Works feels that the mowing needs to occur, storms are threatening, it's getting close to snow season, he can make that decision. That's the emergency, if you want that kind of the definition, but that's it. He decides.
Yeah, I understand what you're after, Jerry. I just believe this is the wrong department to run this through. So I understand your initiative, and I understand your desire, but I think it's just in the wrong direction. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Jordan? Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of questions, actually, with that idea. But with that, if, if in the case that it's declared arbitrarily an emergency by whoever decides that, are we still going to bill the property owner in that instance? Jerry, I mean, I guess I would ask you for an explanation. I mean, if you feel that we would then bill them.
You're asking me? I don't care. You bill them if you want, but it needs to be mowed. He makes the decision and goes, gets it done. If the city wants it, bill, bill them.
Here's my concern, is frankly, putting myself in the property owner's shoes, if somebody just arbitrarily dictates that this is an emergency, then mows my yard without giving me a proper amount of time to address the situation, then you bill me, frankly, I wouldn't feel very inclined to pay the bill at all. And I'm just, and I guess personally, I would be concerned about my ability to face a form of, you know, due process and say, you know, I was notified of a problem, I addressed it or I didn't. Because without being notified of some sort of violation and just taking the word of somebody else, I have a real problem with that. But I'll yield the floor to let that, you know, simmer. But just letting, you know, some city employee dictate that we have an emergency and have that authority to do that, and then bill somebody later, that concerns me.
Well, then we remove the billing process. But it's an interesting thing. Maybe the DOT has to start billing for mowing along rightaway by ninety. The whole point is, this is safety. This is getting the road plowed of snow, and that's all it is, probably one swath of a mower on both sides. It's not a huge deal. And I certainly trust our Public Works Director to handle it.
I'll yield the floor, but I just, our Public Works Director can do that, but the idea of allowing to give our city employees the ability to dictate something as an emergency, first off, in and of itself, to me, is a scary precedent. And then, without any criteria, I mean, it's arbitrary. And then, number two, to not allow the person that is the person being affected by this without due notification and the ability to appeal that idea, that just seems so contrawise to the entire way that we function as a government, that I just, I'm opposed to what you're saying. I'll yield the floor.
May I add that I assume that the due process has occurred through the code enforcement to the property owner to get this done, and it just hasn't, and he is determined, or who are the Public Works, that it has to be done. So I'd say the due process has occurred, I would assume.
May I offer up the motion to revert back to the original motion? And then, may I hold the floor?
Joel, I don't, can we do that?
Just go ahead.
Because it was a friendly amendment. No one objected to the friendly amendment. And so the, it seems that, go ahead.
I would, I would advocate that you vote on the amendment, and then if the amendment fails, you can introduce a new amendment that accomplishes that.
Thank you. My, my thought behind this is, here we are discussing the process of who would be cutting the lawn. And I know it could happen that we may be suddenly at that situation where we need to be cutting the lawn. But right now, I think the first step is discontinuing the lawn mowing. And I think we do have a little bit of time before we'll have to get to the point of the emergency lawn mowing. And I think it might be in our best interest to make sure that everybody is on board, and we figure out the best possible route, whether it be Public Works, whether it be a joint, you know, with Parks and Rec, but trying to make sure that we get it right, rather than pushing something through when the grass isn't growing yet. So we still have time to fix that piece.
What I would like to do before we proceed is I think that, based on the reaction of the friendly amendment, we should have, we should have it be a regular amendment. So do we have a second or to your, to your amendment? Can we have a second or? Okay, we have a, we have a second or to Jerry Wright's amendment, and repeat your amendment one more time.
Basically, that if, and I use the word emergency, if needed, that the Director of Public Works has the authority to mow the rightaway in the interest of protecting it from snow, the roadway. Is that clear? He's not mowing the lawn. He's not mowing the whole ditch. He's just mowing the shoulder to keep the grass down, so the snow doesn't trap on the road. In rural sections of roads, this like Seeker, Tower Road, places like that. It's not lawns and so forth, like Long Bull. These are rural sections.
Okay. So we are now going to discuss the amendment only. So if you have your light on, if you could remove yourself from queue, if you're not going to talk on the amendment. We'll go to Dave Davis. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, you grant me a little bit of latitude on this, because I want to try to get my arms around how the amendment is where it is at this point. And Mr. Barbeer, who left the room, but if you can hear me from the other side, come back and correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you, Jeff. The, the process that we currently have with tall grass that is owned by a landowner would be that if someone notes that there's tall grass, code enforcement would then go out and notify the landowner. They would go through the process to tell them to correct the problem. If they didn't, they would abate the land, and we would hire someone to mow the grass, correct?
Correct.
And what's the duration of that cycle?
Well, that cycle is actually, at this point, is a ten-day notice. There's actually, we're bringing forward some ordinance changes here, just in the next couple of weeks. They're going to shorten it to seven. So it's not a long process, and we do have, I mean, we do abate it. We hire a contractor, and we mow it. It gets mowed one way or another.
So it's theoretically probable that even in an emergency situation, using the normal process, that Alderman Mason is concerned that we're, somebody's arbitrarily going to come in and just decide this afternoon to mow it. And I share his concern. It's unlikely that the first of October is going to sneak up on us. We'll probably see it coming most years, and have opportunities to go through that fourteen-day period and do the abatement, and have the process where we could mow those properties that weren't taken care of their own. own. Correct?
Correct. And to give you, like I say, we're going to come forward with the ordinance changes, and we could by ordinance then mow it on day eight. So it, and if Public Works, we would take a complaint, so to speak, from Public Works about somebody's road ditch, just like we would a member of the public. They can just let us know.
So I'll address this to Joel Landin. Is there any reason, Joel, that we could not, do we have to, once we abate it, do we have to bid it out to a private contractor, or to speed up the process, could we turn to the Parks Department or Public Works and have them take care of it with their equipment so that we get it handled before that snowstorm that might be coming in the next few weeks takes place?
We could certainly do it with our own staff. And just some general comments about this discussion. Right now, we are mowing the Rideway, we aren't mowing private property necessarily, although the owners of the adjacent property owned to the middle of the road. So, but we are mowing the park and the boulevard, the shoulder area that is part of the Rideway. At this point, if there were any rideways which code enforcement missed, in which the owners had not received notice of a violation or that they needed to mow the grass, and Public Works identified those prior to a storm, and they wanted to go out and mow them, so long as we didn't bill that back, I don't think we would have an issue with the due process. The only ones we would bill back and charge the owners for mowing would be the ones where they had been given the notice of violation, they had been instructed to mow it, they had failed to comply with that. So I think that would avoid most of the due process issues. And whether you declared an emergency or not, I think we could go into the Rideway and mow it if there was some that were identified, or one fell through the cracks and did not get noticed by, from code enforcement, we would still have the capability to take care of that. Really, at that point, to me, the only question would be whether or not we could bill it back to the landowner, or whether we would just eat that cost and the city would bear it.
Thank you, Joel. My point with it is, I think there's a very logical process in place that gives us the path already, and there may be just a slight variation in how we would handle it, and this is where I ask the mayor for just a little bit of latitude. The only piece of this that I think is extremely important that we understand is that the reason that this is before us is twofold, in my opinion. One, obviously, the city is paying for something that they, in this case, the Parks Department is paying for something that they don't feel is their responsibility, and in tough economic times, I understand that it's cost-saving. But I also look at it from a standpoint that it's really a fairness issue. Every other landlord in town, or landowner in town, is paying to maintain their rights of way. And I don't think it's fair that we take care of some and not take care of others. So I don't really think that we have a choice but to cease unless we're going to take care of everyone's rights of way. I don't think we're prepared to do that. So I hope we can move forward with this one. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Alderman-Davis and Attorney Landin had touched on most of my thoughts of that. There is a process in that we could follow, and I would like to think that any of our employees would be capable, or able, or authorized to take steps in an emergency to fix something for public safety. And so I hate that we're making a real big deal out of this. Now, I agree that we can't just turn around and charge for whatever steps were taken, but when public safety, and we have people that are out there in bad situations, and they know what needs to be done, and they need to be able to do that. So I will support this amendment in hopes that we can spell out the details about how it would be charged and how it would not be charged, because some of it, the city will have to just eat ourselves, and others, we can go back to the landowner. Thank you.
We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to totally agree with Mr. Davis here on the fact of, you know, we can't do one thing for one group of people and not the other. I think that's very important. I can see where Mr. Wright is coming from. I think the big issue there is possibly, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but possibly he's worried about code enforcement being overtaxed, you know, having too much to do. If we do miss a property, I think then it would be our responsibility to go out and mow it, if we did miss one. I don't think it's going to become an issue, though. I think most of these people, if we go out and we summons them and we abate them once, they won't want to be abated again, because it is expensive, and it's cheaper for them to do it themselves. But I believe it is their responsibility, like every other resident of Rapid City, to take care of their property. So, anyway, thank you, and I yield the floor.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do apologize, but I have one question, mostly for our city attorney, but Joel, and please bear with me, but the difference between an ordinance and a resolution, a resolution is just a formal declaration of opinion or intent, correct?
An ordinance is a permanent legislative act. Essentially, anything that the council does that is not a permanent legislative act is a resolution. So if you were to tell the Public Works Director that if, by the time it's ready to snow, there is a certain rideway that hasn't been mowed, that was previously mowed, and code enforcement somehow missed it, or the landowner didn't take care of it, and it didn't get mowed in time, he has the authority to go out and do it, that would be a resolution. You're just giving him guidance, saying that if you go out and do this, this would be all right. As I indicated earlier, I don't think it's necessary for you to pass such a resolution for him to be able to do that, so long as he's doing it already, and it's within the public rideway, I believe that that would be within his authority to do.
Appreciate that, Joel. The, kind of my line of thought on asking the difference is, we started out in this discussion with a simple, you know, memorandum that basically dictates that part of the reason this is coming up is because our city ordinance currently asks, under, I believe it's 12.20.090, that anyone that owns any parcel of land, tract, et cetera, is responsible for that rideway, and we're talking about just a resolution to enforce what we currently have as an ordinance. My concern is, is now the discussion is talking about, you know, a number of different facets that frankly sound, and maybe that's why I wanted to ask the definition, but sound is more along the lines that we're talking about a permanent act, a legislative act, to say this is now how we're going to operate with these sort of things. And I just wanted to clarify that, because if we're jumping, you know, the line there, I just want to be clear, because it, you know, one sounded pretty clear that we were just resolving something, and the other, it sounds more along the lines of something else. So I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Kerry Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I probably am looking at this way too simple. But we started out with something, as you said, Alderman-Mason, that was just a simple thing, that we notify the property owners, they're going to be responsible for mowing their rideway in front of them. If not, we're going to get somebody abated, go out there. Now, we want to get the Public Works involved in that, and they state they don't have enough equipment and that, it's not ready. We're getting, in my opinion, we're getting too many hands in this. Let's keep it simple. Let's get it back to the basis, the way we've always done this. It's worked. I'm not convinced that it's going to be a big public safety issue, so I will not be supporting the motion as it is with this amendment. Thank you.
Ron Sasso.
Call the question.
Question has been called, or the objection's to calling the question.
Read it first.
Okay.
Read the motion.
What we're doing here is, we're going to be proceeding directly to a vote on the motion to amend, the motion on the floor, and the motion to amend is to give the Public Works Director authority in an emergency to mow. Did I get that right? Okay. We'll proceed directly to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
No.
Mason.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Sasso.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Pardon?
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Roberts.
No.
Brown.
No.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay, we'll proceed now to a vote on the original motion. The amendment has failed. We'll now vote on the original motion, and the original motion is to discontinue mowing in their rights of way. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Motion carries with one no, from Jerry Wright.
May I say something?
No.
I will later, then.
You may later. Item 64.
Item 64, Norwell Heights subdivision number two, a request by Jane Bioda to consider an application for a fence height exception to allow a six-foot-high fence in lieu of a four-foot-high fence in the front yard setback. We're generally described as being located at 1502 Downing Street. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts, to approve. Any discussion with stipulations?
I'm sorry.
Is that what you said, with stipulations? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bids.
First item for bid is the Deadwood Avenue Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension Project. We received quite a few bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $541,053.19 to Rapid Construction Company, LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Roberts for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 66.
Next item is for the sludge polymer for the water reclamation facility, and we received four bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $65,400 to Polydine, Inc.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If there's no objection, let's take a brief recess and come back at no later than eight o'clock. Can we have a motion to recess?
So.
Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts, for a 10-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in recess. We're in recess. We'll reconvene the meeting, and we'll go to item sixty-six A. Item sixty-six A is a reminder of the Vision Fund Committee meeting on Monday, January twenty-three, at six-thirty PM in council chambers. The draft agenda is attached. It's a draft agenda. It might change, but it is attached for your review. This is formerly known as the 2012 Committee. It will be meeting next Monday. It is a committee of the council as a whole, and per the bylaws, it is chaired by the city council president. Can we?
Second.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson to acknowledge item sixty-six A. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-six B are appointments to the Rapid City Depository Task Force that expire April sixteen of 2012. Voting members Jim Meyerhouse, Shirley Frederick, Tom Katus, Pete Kappa, and Jordan Mason, who's appointed by the council. Non-voting members Pauline Assumption, City Finance, and Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. A motion by Peterson.
Second.
And a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we had this discussion last council meeting, I was in support of a subcommittee of the council to look at this issue. I believe that's what we were elected to do, to investigate questions that come up in the event that we just can't pull it together, or we need some input as far as experts in the fields of something that we're looking into, then I'm all for a task force, but in this case, I'm just not. I just think I can't in good conscience just take a committee's recommendation on something like this and just put it through, so I'm gonna have to do my own homework anyway before a vote. So I just think we're just adding time and steps to the process, and just wanted to clarify that because I didn't quite elaborate enough on that last time. Thanks so much.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will also say thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity on this task force, and I look forward to it, but after reviewing the meeting minutes, I've also talked to our council president and several other council members, and I'm still a little unsure as to what the direction of this task force really is. After listening to a lot of the input during that meeting and re-watching the video, going over the meeting minutes, I want some direction as to whether we're looking for making a formal policy here, if we're just trying to create some sort of consensus on whether we prefer local banking versus federal banking, if we're looking for interest rates. I mean, what's the overall objective here? And I guess I'd like that stipulated before we proceed forward.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can offer a suggestion, Alderman, Mason, just a suggestion, not meaning this is direction. My primary, and I'd have to go back through the minutes to reread what was said in the minutes, but my part of it, the question I had, was we've got something like nineteen banking institutions on the list. My question at that time, it still remains, is how do those institutions get on the list? And if we can allow more institutions to be on the list? And then what standard do we have to apply to those institutions that are being on the list? And I'm open for interpretation of what a standard is, but essentially, that's my two questions, is who's on the list? How do they get on the list, in other words? And then the standards that are applied to these institutions. Thank you, Mayor.
Ron Sasso.
I think one of the things that was interesting with the discussion on this was that, you know, some of the questions that I asked of our city's finance officer is basically there are a lot of things that we have in place already that are good. I think as a council, we were responding quite a bit to citizen feedback. I think Jordan's questions of what really is the goal of, you know, coming up with a solution, a resolution, a change? Or is it simply looking at what's being done, which is more what I thought. We were probably taking a look at what's being done, because at least on the surface, it sounds like what we are doing is working and is being done well. And having that further validated is, I think, is fine. It might be beneficial, and there's the possibility something may come out of it that we don't expect, but based on the interest rates we have, the majority of our money is local. And there again, there are good big banks that we also utilize, so.
Jerry Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I wonder if we're not taking something that should be simple and trying to make it too complicated again. If I'm gonna, we're here to try to make the best deal and arrangement that's gonna be profitable for the citizens of Rapid City and for our government. If I'm taking a business, and I'm gonna take a large sum of money into a bank trying to decide where I'm gonna deposit my money, I'm gonna have two criteria if we're gonna come at it from a business angle, in my opinion. One, what kind of interest are you gonna give me on my money? Two, what are the fees are you gonna be charging me? One could offset the other. That's the criteria that I hope we come back with and say that we should be looking at. Who can give us the best deal for the city and the citizens of the city? And not complicate it with a lot of PC. Thank you.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this came up the last time, just a refresher, the item was to approve the list of depositories. The item was not to determine the criteria to approve or to determine the list. The item was to approve a list. There were a group of citizens that voiced an opinion, many of them saying they didn't like certain banks on that list for various different reasons. They offered us few recommendations in a positive sense. They offered us some things that they didn't like and some particular institutions that they didn't like. They really didn't weigh in on whether the institutions they didn't like were necessary to the operation of the city. They pretty much just told us the ones that they felt didn't fit the criteria that they preferred for whatever reasons they had, and I appreciate those. But there was never really a question posed to us to create a set of criteria by which we would select our financial institutions. Additionally, those institutions on that list serve a multitude of different purposes. Some of them are simply depositories where we might be looking for nothing other than stability and the highest interest rates. Others might be something that we're looking at the lowest fees. Yet others might be ones that are fiscally responsible enough to be able to handle the size, the sheer magnitude of dollars of one of our bonds. So the criteria is all the way across the board, but that really wasn't what was brought forward. It was based on who was local and who wasn't. So I really struggled with what people didn't want when they failed to bring forward what it was they did want. Additionally, as I understand it, and I hope our finance officer corrects me if I'm wrong in this, but my understanding is that list is simply that, a list. These are the financial institutions that have asked to be included so that in the event that we need their services in the course of the year, they are already approved by the council that that finance officer can choose to do business with them. There's no guarantees that we will. There is no stipulation that says how much we will or what percentage we will or any, you know, dollar amount that will be invested with them. So it simply says, here's a list. Some of the ones that were mentioned that weren't on there, quite frankly, the city doesn't qualify to be a member of certain credit unions, according to the credit unions that I asked even. So I mean, there was a lot of misinformation, and quite frankly, it's the reason that I offered the substitute motion to approve the list so that we would not lock the city down and have the inability to function financially. We have a list. Now, almost to humor them, I also said, and go ahead and put together the committee. And we all voted to do just that. I don't think any of us know what that committee was put together for, and I think Jordan brings up a very valid point. We have a committee that we don't know what its purpose was, and I can honestly say that the most important part is we have a list of banks that were approved, and the city can move forward with its financial responsibility, and that was the criteria that I hoped that we were gonna get done that night, and we have. So beyond that, hopefully, we don't let yet another committee bog down the operation of the city. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I, probably Alderman Davis probably didn't want to say that he makes decisions based to humor our citizens. We had probably twenty-some or more people here a couple of weeks ago. They had the testimony about how local banks are more likely to invest in small businesses. They gave us concerns that they had. We said that at that time that we had not really looked at the interest rates and the fees and all that for quite a while. It had been a while since the city had taken that look to see what all these banks are doing, and so we agreed at that time that we would do that. And basically to make sure the city is getting the best bank for their buck. Are we choosing? We say we want to create jobs here. One of the things would be that if you invest in banks, that turn around and invest in businesses, local businesses, that's a win-win for the city because we get more new businesses and plus our money stays here locally. Now, it's true what they say that federal banks are, have probably, or national banks probably can take on bigger jobs. So there are lots of factors that have to be looked at, but I'm disappointed to say that we're here or make decisions to humor our citizens. I think they have legitimate concerns. I don't think any bank has anything to worry about here in Rapid City for us to take a look at them. We look at all sorts of things. We look at contractors. We look at who brings in the lowest bid to make decisions on, and basically, that's what this is, is looking at the banks and saying, if everything is equal, do we want to favor a local bank that maybe has a better reputation for supporting local startups? Is that in the city's best interest? So I don't think this is to get away from one bank or another. It is for the citizens to look at where we're spending a lot of our money. So I hope that you will approve this committee. It's a fair one. It's fairly balanced. We've got some good leadership on it, and it's not to take very long just to look at what is being done and move on. It's, we do lots of things by, because our citizens want us to. The term length issue, we went to the citizens to find out what they wanted for that. The summer nights, we're supposed to be meeting with the downtown businesses to see what they want, so it's in the role of the council to hear what those citizens need, and I certainly hope that we will support this motion tonight. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the finance officer. When's the last time we went out for RFP on our banking?
On the banking itself, I honestly couldn't tell you because it was before I started with the city. I do have concerns if we were to go out right now because, quite frankly, we are getting a good rate through Pioneer and lower no fees, and I know in my gut that if we went out for RFPs, they would probably lower their rate, and so I would be very leery in doing that, at least with that large account.
So a question, you really think we're probably getting the best bang for our buck with what we have right now for the citizens of Rapid City?
For the most part, yes, I do, because the majority of our bank, or of our money is in the bank that gives us the highest interest rate and the lowest fees.
What would your direction for this committee be, considering you're the one that's taking care of most of our banking?
Quite honestly, right now, what we look at, Mr. Davis was pretty spot-on, and as was Mr. Brown, as far as what our criteria are as far as the banking that we do. We look at interest rates and we look at fees, but we also look at who has the capacity to either insure our deposits based on FDIC insurance or NCUA insurance. insurance or NCUA insurance. And in anything in excess of that, they have to collateralize 100%. So if they do not have assets in the dollar amount of our deposits to collateralize, or if they choose not to, we cannot legally bank there, at least over the limit that they can collateralize.
How many banks on that list would qualify under that? All of them?
With the deposits that are currently there, yes. I do know that when we first started doing business with the Black Hills Federal Credit Union, at the time, all they wanted was the maximum amount allowed by the insurance, which at that time was $100,000. They did not want anymore because they did not want to have to collateralize those deposits. So they, what the deposits are there, they either have the capacity to collateralize or they have the insurance to cover it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, it's not that we're not listening to the people. It's just that we are doing our homework and we're investigating. We're finding out what kinds of practices we've implemented that is, that practices that are getting the best bang for the taxpayer buck. And I mean, the risk that we run if we were to swing the pendulum, even if we could regulation-wise, swing the pendulum all the way to some of the people that voiced their concerns at the last meeting, we're not going to be leveraging those tax dollars to the best of our ability. So is that what the taxpayers want? Do they want us to be responsible stewards of those tax dollars? Or do they, would they rather see us put them all into places that can do startup business but at, not allowing us to leverage our, this, the city's money as much? I mean, there's going to be a trade-off. And I think we have been extremely responsible. I know, I mean, talking to Pauline behind the scenes, she stresses over this stuff. She takes it home. She's constantly trying to just make sure that things are running tightly and efficiently and to the best of our ability. And so the taxpayers out there that are concerned about this issue really need to ask themselves the question, do you want us to get the best rates? Do you want us to be able to run the city as efficiently as possible? Or are you of the opinion that even if regulation-wise we can, we should just swing the pendulum the other way and risk getting, I really, I mean, less of a return on that investment? So something to think about.
City Council President Dave Davis. And I'd like to just say a few words about this, and perhaps this will help the discussion. I think a little bit of history on how we got here is important. Many of you, or some of you may know Wes Richman, who was Rapid City's finance officer approximately 40 years ago. And I had an opportunity to visit with him a while back. And he said that one of the first things that he and Mayor Barnett had done was, was years ago, in 1971, was to take a look at where Rapid City was depositing its money. And they worked very hard to get better interest rates. Of course, interest rates then were very different than they are now, but there were some changes made at that time that were very positive. And so I remembered that conversation a while back. And I asked the finance office, I said, when's the last time we've taken a look at our depository list? It had been a while. And in discussing this, we noted that there had been a few banks in Rapid City that had come to town in the last 10 years that weren't on the list. So Pauline, assumption our finance officer, simply brought forward a resolution amending the old list, adding two new banks to the list. And that's what generated this discussion. It has been a while since we've had 20 speakers on one item. And the consensus appeared to be at that time that having a committee to take a look at this would be a good idea. This is an important task. Pauline and I plan on digging into this and making sure we're getting the best deal for the taxpayers with the interest rates and other factors. And when I was asked the question on why there were 10 credit unions not on the list, I simply wasn't able to answer it. I think we kind of know the answer now that the rules are different. But based on that and also the fact that there is millions of dollars involved, it doesn't hurt to have some extra sets of eyes on this discussion. Ultimately, it's the mayor and city council that make the decision. This task force has a shelf life. It will be done in April. And I don't think it hurts to have the task force. So I just wanted you to be aware of the history of this, and hopefully that helps. We'll now go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to clarify that in no way am I trying to say that I'm against, you know, having a task force, but after being on other task forces, task forces that have no direction, meander, and they usually fail. That's typically true with most things in life, from my experience thus far. If you set out to build something and you don't really have an idea of what you're building, it'll probably collapse in on itself. So that's really what I'm trying to get direction on. And obviously, I didn't communicate specifically what I'm looking for, but, you know, I would say after writing the notes of some of the feedback that I'm getting, Dave Davis, Alderman Dave Davis, probably gave me, you know, kind of hit the nail on the head here. The original proposal that was before the council was to consider who we're going to do business with. So when we created the task force, I'm unclear, are we considering the consideration, i.e. the method of how we consider who we do business with? Or are we delving into the entire process of how the municipality does its banking and then specifically on the criteria of how we do business? And then within that, just so I'm quoting the right person, and I'm glad they brought this up, but Alderman Roberts pointed out, you know, some of the interest rates and some of the things that Alderman Gary Brown touched on. Do you want us to go into the collateralization, the interest rates? Do you also want us to touch into, you know, yeah, sorry, municipal bonding, especially given the fact that some of those ratings have suddenly changed? I mean, how far down the rabbit hole do you want us to go here? So, because, I mean, this is a very complicated system and, you know, and by April, you know, there's people that spend their lives, literally, on these subjects alone. They write books. So if I could get a short summary of, you know, what chapter in that book you would like to delve into, that would help. Thank you.
Jordan, let me see if this helps. My suggestion is that this committee look at the procedures for selecting depositories. And I know that that could go down a number of rabbit holes, but as the council's representative on that committee, I'm sure you will probably help keep that from happening. We'll go to Ron Sasso.
And Mayor, would it be acceptable to look at adding, formalize the review process, which right now we are looking at the list of banks? And then also, when we should go back to RFP?
I think that fits under what I just said.
Okay.
Under procedures for selecting depositories. I mean, for example, if New York, if New York Prime goes below what it is now by, you know, two percentage points, that might trigger, that might trigger a review where we would say, well, you know what? Now it's time to look at the procedures for selecting depositories and look at who we're doing business with, because we could probably get a better deal. I think, you know, I believe that that should be the focus of the, of the committee. Bonnie Peterson.
I think the upside of doing this is that we reinforce our, that this, we look into this and we find out that we are doing the best for the city. So that's a very, and it would require no changes. So it's just citizens have concerns, they want to look at it, and I think that's a valid concern. So anyway, I just see this as a win-win.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do apologize. And I'm going to try and ask this as clearly as I can because, frankly, the last two statements and what I'm trying to get narrowed down kind of go against each other. Do you want us to, the list that we have currently has a list of depositories that we will consider. Does not mean, and please, if the finance officer, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but it does not mean that we're going to do business with that. So do you want this committee to figure out who we stick on the list as a possibility that we're going to do business with? As in when you said, look at the procedures for selecting the depositories? Or when Alderman Ron Sasso said, formalize the RFP process, which then specifies who we are actually going to do business with? So all I'm asking, are we looking at who we're going to do business with and the consideration on who we will consider? Or are we getting into the business of who we're actually doing business with? I mean, I, and please correct me if this is not clear, because if it's both and it's a free-for-all, then I, you know, then just say it's a free-for-all. I just want a clear, concise answer here. Thank you.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Well, that was easy.
Give me just, I'll let her speak.
Thank you. You know, the citizens also say that this city council is inefficient. And my whole point is it doesn't have anything to do with the people on this potential committee. It has to do with if we want to handle this, investigate it and do it efficiently, why is it not done by the council? We have access to the resources. We have access to the information. All we're doing is dragging it out. And like I said, I'm going to have to go through all the information anyway before I can, I can make a conscientable vote up here. So it's not like it's saving us time. It's just delaying things. So I hope that drives it home.
So I feel compelled to answer Jordan's question because if I don't, I know that after the meeting, he will remind me that I didn't answer the question. First of all, I think, Jordan, you might be over-analyzing this just a bit, but I, but what I, what I think that we're, in, by saying that we're going to review the procedures for selecting depositories is similar to reviewing the consultant selection process that we, which is a process that we undertook a number of years ago. We took a process that hadn't been looked at in a while and, and we updated it. So I believe that that's what we're doing here. And there are, there are other alternatives. One alternative would be for the council to forego having this separate committee and have a subcommittee of the council. That's been done in the past. I'm okay with that. I'm also okay with continuing the original process where the finance office was going to take the list and, and take a look at the interest rates and see if we could get a better deal for the taxpayers. I'm okay with that, too. In light of the fact that we had more than, you know, we had approximately 20 people come forward and expressed concerns, it seemed that giving them a voice in the process, we would ultimately have, as a council and mayor, the final say, seemed reasonable. Did I answer your question, Jordan? Okay. You can have the floor back if you want to. Okay. Very good. There are no further lights. The motion on the floor is to proceed with the appointments, as noted. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries with one no from Charity Doyle. Item 66C.
Thank you, Mayor. As 66D, C, I'm sorry, is an update on the town hall meetings held on Saturday, January 14th. Obviously, as you all know, that last Saturday, there were five town hall meetings, one in each ward, held at the same time for the express purpose of hearing from our constituents as to their concerns, their feelings, their direction on where we should go into the future as far as term length for the city council position and the mayor position. I think the most appropriate way to handle this would be to allow each of the ward council people give a, hopefully, brief synopsis of what went on in each of the wards, starting with Ward 1 and moving through to Ward 5, and then moving from there. And whether or not there's a motion to be made at that point, I guess, is a, is another direction. So let's start with Ward 1 and if we can have one or the other of the people start and hopefully, maybe that would be all we need is one from each ward. But Ward 1, please.
Counsel, as far as one of the members of Ward Run, when Charity and I got done with the meeting and that, we looked at her notes. We saw that we couldn't read my notes. And so I suggest we start with Charity and let her go down her clinical way notes.
Clinical, thank you.
And I'll fill in any gaps that I think that left her, Charity. All right?
I'll be as clinical as I can. Thank you. We had 13 people in attendance in Ward 1. It was a very civil discussion, which we both highly appreciated. Only a couple of times do we have to reel the conversation back onto topic. What was interesting is that it was split down the middle, but we didn't just leave it there. Okay, if you're opposed, that's fine. We investigated a little more. And it turned out that if, when we worded the question, well, if the council moves in this direction, how do you feel it's best to be accomplished? Is it by ordinance? Is it by initiated measure? And overwhelmingly, it was by initiated me, I mean, excuse me, by ordinance, overwhelmingly by ordinance, which kind of surprised us both, especially for those people that were adamantly against extending term lengths in the first place. What was interesting about all of this is that there was no clear need for extending term lengths as far as coming out of the opinion in Ward 1. And that everything that, as far as the benefits for those that were for it, was all conjecture. It was all, we presumed that this would happen with extending the term length. So it was, again, a very interesting discussion. And I'm trying to think. The biggest thing that, that came out of the people opposed to it, I will tell you this, this was a very common theme, was that they, as a voter, wanted to have a more frequent voice in who is sitting up here. They, they feel that if it's, especially four years, but if it's three or four years, that they just don't have as much of a say. And it turns out, they really like it. They feel that's the last bit of control that they have, is that two-year window. They can tough it out for two years, but when you ask them to tough out something they're not happy with for three or four, they get a little edgy. So again, split down the middle. Very interesting. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to Ward 2. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for helping sponsor this program. This is kind of an interesting dialogue that I've had with constituents in Ward 2. This last meeting was one of four other meetings that I've had as town hall meetings. And all together, specifically at this last Saturday's meeting, we had approximately nine people in attendance. A couple of former council members were in the audience as well as one department head. And there was some, there was a representative from the Chamber of Commerce and the rest were just everyday citizens from, from Ward 2. Just this particular meeting, there was, I guess, kind of boiling down to it was, what I asked was, one of the questions had to do with the involvement with City Hall. If the people were involved with City Hall, what kind of frequency do they have? And it ranged all the way from nearly daily business with City Hall to infrequent to, I try to stay away from City Hall as much as possible. It was interesting to see the minority of the folks were in agreement that, that they wanted to see an extension of the term lengths. Those were the ones that were primarily doing daily business with City Hall. The majority of the folks at this particular meeting were not fully understanding what the problem was, and they wanted more clarification of what the issue really was. And so their response in essence was, leave it alone. Don't mess with it. And again, this was one of four of meetings that have held in this ward. And if I was to add it up, I guess totally- to add it up, I guess totally, it's kind of amazing for me, the citizen involvement was probably closer to 30 people altogether out of all four meetings. So taking that as a consensus, one way or the other, I don't know if I can heavily depend upon that as any direction of any kind. So I'm at this stage not knowing which direction to give recommendation for, is it by ordinance or by initiated measure? Or much less changing the whole thing. So I guess to kind of sum it up is that we're still evenly, if not evenly split, if not the majority of my ward that are vocal about this, that, "Don't mess with it, just leave it alone." And there's some other things that we can kind of touch base on, but essentially, that was my higher observations about this. Thank you, Mayor.
Gary, you have your light on. Do you want to speak? No? Okay. Dave Davis. Or Jerry Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. Ward 3, I think, was attended by 17 people, citizens, non-council members, non-press, and the comments were unanimously for extending terms, and unanimously for us doing it, as I remember and as I understood it. And I very much appreciate the way it was done. I think it gave the opportunity for the community to meet with the aldermen. And I do take issue, strong issue, with the individual that stated that the journal reporting was biased. It's not true at all. The reporter was present at our meeting and reported what occurred at that meeting. And I don't remember reading anything in that article that made a statement about anything else, and I think it was accurate. I think it kind of shows a point where we wanted to have these meetings without the professionals involved. I think we got a good feeling, at least for where we are, I assume everyone else did, and I know they differed. But I think that our meeting was, as reported unanimously for it, it was our decision, and they wanted us to make it. Thank you.
Ward 4, John Roberts. Or Jordan Mason?
Sure. Well, as mentioned earlier, before the meeting, we got there fairly early, brought some Dunn Brothers coffee and set up, and while we were there, there were a busload of a number of people that were on their way to Deadwood for a good old time. And we happened to take the time to inquire as to what their opinion was, since they were there, and offered them some coffee. It was, we didn't get as in-depth with that crowd, we just, we said, the issue, the way we presented is that the issue comes down to whether or not you think term length should be extended for council and mayor, and the debate is whether three or four years. And then there's also an issue of whether you believe it should be done via ordinance or, you know, via initiative. And pretty interesting, it was overwhelming initiative. Then, even amongst them in that short amount of time, there was a fair discussion on whether or not it should be three to four years. And there was also some interesting combinations that frankly hadn't occurred to me, that there were a couple that felt that it was appropriate that they bring it up via initiative for the council, but then the council should act to initiate the mayor's term length. And that was kind of, you know, kind of a domino effect that I frankly hadn't thought of. After the meeting, we also had about three, I guess, three individuals that were for ordinance, and then the, I would say the majority were for initiative. But again, the different combinations really kind of came to, come out to the forefront. Had some really interesting discussion also. I would actually like to congratulate the representative from the chamber, did a fantastic job of representing their viewpoint, brought in a real interesting element to the discussion, I thought. And really kind of brought forward, in my mind, the, a lot of the different dynamics that this has as a decision, just outside of what's on its face. Got into some interesting discussions about, you know, leadership and where the city's going to go as a whole. But I would say that the comment made that there was a lot of division and a fair amount of controversy of which direction to go and how. Even amongst our group, there were a number of different ways of looking at this, and there did not seem to be a, you know, consolidated consensus in any which direction. So that was really my overall take on this. But a lot of interesting viewpoints, a lot of good discussion. Like I said, I really want to congratulate the chamber's representative, really brought a great element into the discussion as well. But I'll also allow John Roberts to add anything more, if I left anything out.
I don't believe you left anything out. I think one thing that you didn't mention was, out of the three that were for it, only one of them was from Ward 4. The other two were not from our ward. So I think that's a little bit interesting, because out of the people that were actually from Ward 4, it was pretty much unanimous that they wanted it to be by initiative. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson, Ward 5.
I want to thank, we had 16 people in attendance, and the majority were wanting to change the mayor's term, and also a lesser, but still a majority, were okay to change the council. There was only one person out of 16 that was totally opposed to changing any of the term lengths. It was pretty much split for whether to do it by ordinance or by people's vote. The majority wanted four years for the mayor and three years for the council on ours. And they also asked us to look into if we could put an advisory measure on the ballot, so basically, kind of like a poll, and then a legally unbinding measure to see if we could get, let the people just express their opinion without a legal, you know, requirement. But Mr. Landine said that was not possible, that we don't have that authority to do that. But they did have a good idea. And they also brought up something very intriguing at the very, very end, and I think, let Ron talk about that.
The majority of what we had discussed was pretty well split. I mean, there would be a couple votes in favor one way or the other, and actually, we had a wonderful group. We had former Mayor McGlocklin, we had Senator Craig Teasen, we had Linda Raby, and we had Citizens for Liberty represented. It was very diverse, former city employees there. And we were split until we came to a discussion about what if we were just looking at lengthening the mayor's term and doing that by ordinance, because there wouldn't be any inherent conflict of interest from the council's standpoint. And it shifted on that one single point to almost unanimous. There was only one person who wasn't in favor of lengthening terms at all. And that was a surprise. I have to say, I think both Bonnie and I did not expect that one item to have such a shift when we were split down the middle almost the entire time, within a vote or two, whether or not to go to ordinance, length of terms, and so forth. So anyway, that was just something that I thought was very interesting. And then, just to follow up on that article in the journal, I think originally, when it went online, it didn't mention that it was Ward 3. The headline was the, I think the headline was the issue. So, and I don't think you have any responsibility for that, so.
I just wanted to add that, that it seems like, when we listen to this, that we each represent our wards pretty well, because it seems like the feedback we got was kind of our feeling that we had. And that 13 of other people there were okay to change only the term of mayor without a public vote. And they said the reason for that, their rationale for that, was because it wasn't such a big change in government. Whereas if we changed both the council and the mayor at one time, that it's a big change. And they were okay with, so even the people that were adamant about taking it to initiative were very willing to let us change the mayor's term by ordinance. So, very intriguing.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick recap from all five wards, as far as what we really put together here. First of all, there was some criticism earlier about the plan of doing them all at the same time. And I want to compliment this council for coming together with that plan and sticking with it, because if there's one thing we accomplished last Saturday morning, is we heard from the people involved in each one of those meetings. The intent of doing it at the same time was very, very simple. Had we done them in five consecutive nights, and I'll use the term, because we all understand how loosely I'm using it, but we would have had the professionals moving from meeting to meeting to meeting, trying to convince the populace of their opinion. What this council was really concerned about was hearing the opinion of the populace so they could convince us of what we needed to do, what we need to do. And I think that's extremely important, that our mission that we sat out to do, and why we did it that way, and I want to commend this council for doing that. The response was, I think, was phenomenal. We had over 100 people Saturday morning that chose to come out. Next Saturday morning, we have our first Cracker Barrel, and I'm sure that if Lynn and Linda have 100 people there on the first one, they're going to be tickled to death. And to get 100 people out last Saturday morning to give their opinion about something as important as term length is, to me, I think is just a phenomenal response. Unfortunately, the results weren't quite as phenomenal. As you heard up here tonight, we didn't get any clear guidance. There seems to be some geographic differences of opinion, the different wards had sent different messages, different, aldermen heard different messages, different ways. Needless to say, I believe we have our work cut out for us to bring resolution to this matter. It's not something that we're going to do tonight, and I would entertain that we have a motion to take this issue to the next Legal and Finance Committee, so that we can start the direction of where we're going to go to handle this, thinking back on the point that it was a month ago or so, we had a motion to have these town hall meetings, so we could hear what the direction of the public was, and then could take some action as to whether we, as a council, would take action by ordinance, or whether we would put it back into the hands of the people, and I'll, and say, "It's time for you to step up and bring an initiative to us." So I would entertain a fellow councilperson to bring a motion forward now that we put it on next week's Legal and Finance. Thank you.
We have a motion by Brown, and a second by, was that a motion by Wright, and a second by Peterson, to add this to the February 1st Legal and Finance agenda for further discussion. And we'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, what's the timeline now? We're pushing on to start having some more meetings. What's the timeline, though, if this is something that is decided to go to initiated measure? What's the cutoff date? That we can go out and get that done, and still get it on the ballot?
Pauline?
I unfortunately cannot tell you that today. I will have to work the dates backwards, but I would hope to have something for you on February 1st, if that's okay with you.
Well, that will be our window and our drop-dead date, if we're going to do anything this year. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, you know, something to keep in mind, council, is that an initiated measure is designed when the people are speaking and the government is not doing its job. So we're just not taking any action, we're not doing anything. That's a tool that the people have to say, "You will listen to us, we are going to put this on the ballot." This council is obviously, from the length of time we've put into this, we're not adverse to exploring this issue. We are doing it. So I don't know that initiated measure is even warranted, it's not appropriate, because we are dealing with it, we are addressing it. The other tool is the referendum, and that is where the government has taken action on something, and the people say, "Uh-uh, don't like it," and they refer it, and it has a chance to reverse that decision. That's really the tool, I think, that would be pertinent in this case, if it really is that opposed, and we do go down that direction, which, we won't go there. We'll hash it out in committee, but I'll leave it at that.
We have a motion to take this to Legal and Finance? And we'll go to Richie.
Mayor, my comments won't be addressing this measure, but I just wanted to advise the council of some of the reaction that I was getting at my forum, is that if we change this at all, I can't say threatening is way too strong of a word, but they politically said that if we go forward with this as any kind of a change, then they are actively seeking someone to run against us, the Ward 2 council members. With that in mind, I kind of welcome that challenge. So I'm almost going the other direction. If I get a statement presented to me that, in that fashion, I'm probably going to vote against them in that case. So just with that in mind, Mayor, I agree with what Alderwoman Doyle has commented here. Everything that she said is seconded by me, so I just wanted to make the council aware what is happening in Ward 2. Thank you.
Okay. We have no further discussion. Motion is to take this to Legal and Finance on February 1 for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have item 66C, D, appointment of Bonnie Peterson as council representative of the Main Street Square Art Committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso, and Bonnie Peterson would like to recuse herself from the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Bonnie Peterson. We are now on public hearing items, items 67 through 79. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? Motion by Davis, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one speaker request form from Troy Erickson. This is on item 72. Mr. Erickson?
You hear me? Okay. I'm Troy Erickson, I'm with M. Joy from Rapid City, and I'm just here to address any questions or concerns on item 72, which is malt beverage license transfer. So I'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
We have no further speaker request forms. We will now go to, let's see here. We will keep the public hearing open and proceed with removing any items from consent public hearing items, and vote on the remaining continued public hearing consent items. So items 67 through 68, are there any items that need to be removed? If not, can we have a motion to continue those two items per the recommendations on the agenda? Motion by Brown, second by Roberts, to continue items 67, 68 to February 6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to close public hearing, comment for items 67 through 79. Motion by Doyle and second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items 69 through 74 are consent public hearing items. If there are no items to be removed, can we have a motion to proceed with those items? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I need to remove item seventy-one, because I need to have that continued, please.
All right, so the motion, the motion then is to approve sixty-nine through seventy-four with the exception of seventy-one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-one, Jordan, will you please read it into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Item seventy-one is MG Oil Company doing business as Market Square Two on sixteen twenty forty St. Patrick's Street, Suite 103, is looking for a retail on-off sale malt liquor beverage license with video lottery to transfer that to Uncle Sam's East on eleven twenty East North Street, and I move to approve. Or, I'm sorry, to continue, continue.
Until when, Pauline?
February twenty-first, please.
Until February twenty-one, that's your motion, Jordan?
That was my motion.
And second by Peterson, okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on items seventy-five through seventy-nine, Jordan? Item seventy-five?
Thank you, Mayor. Item seventy-five is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-eight, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is zoning from no-use district to general commercial, and this is located at seventeen hundred Seeger Drive, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Doyle, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-six, Jordan?
This is second reading in ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-nine, and this re-zoning from office commercial district to general commercial district, and this is located at East Anamosa Street and Elkville Road, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Doyle, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-seven?
This is second reading in ordinance fifty-seven ninety, and this re-zoning from mobile home residential district to light industrial district, and this is located northeast of the intersection of Seeger Drive and Dias Avenue, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Nordstrom, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-eight, Gary Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Seventy-eight, authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of water along Cherry Avenue and additional pavement along East St. Francis Street, located at the current southern terminus of Lime Light Lane, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-nine, Gary?
Request by Britton Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated for John Roberts Trust for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirements to install water and sidewalk along Cherry Avenue to construct a minimum twenty-six foot wide paved surface and sidewalk along the north side of East St. Francis Street, and to dedicate seventeen additional feet of right-of-way along East St. Patrick's Street as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of East St. Patrick's Street and Cherry Avenue, move to approve with steps.
Second.
Motion by Brown and second by Roberts, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pauline, bill list?
The bill list is as presented and attached to the agenda, with the total bills equalling seven million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Peterson, any discussion? Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question concerning the bill list, but there's been something I've been noticing that's been reoccurring about every other month, and I'm just curious, we have Malcolm Chapman being billed out for about five grand, it's several thousand dollars every other month, and I'm just curious what the services that he's providing.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm not sure about being billed out every other month, I do know we contract with him to do a couple different classes for the managers, one is basic supervision skills, basically, and the next one is an advanced management studies class. I do also know that other departments have hired his services for training as well.
Thank you, that was my only inquiry.
Any further discussion? Motion is to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Doyle, second by Nordstrom, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.